Yeah.
Can you come and tell me where that ditch is at?
The ditch over there in front of the ditch.
On Fourth Street by Maria Schur's house.
Yeah, behind the pines and...
Yeah, where the mud's washing on the road.
Just go down Fourth Street. Go rolling back to the park.
Yeah, I was over there and looked at it. She's...
This will work. It'll go all the way up to there.
Yeah.
Just go half and down. Way up. All the way down. Way over there to the side.
Did you look that night, Tom? Did you see where that's going off there? Pretty soon, correct? Very quickly.
That one right over there.
I know. I know who that road is. You don't think that's him?
So that road is getting drenched too.
Yeah, that's what he said, "Do that ditch."
That's what we were discussing, how it can be done. But it's gonna have to be a continuous cleaning out, cleaning out, cleaning out.
Or they have... And it needs to stop, mom, and their property. You know, us would like that. To wash your yard out.
They're really good. They'll talk. They'll talk to them, and they'll talk to them. We can't do that.
Is that the condition? Is that the condition? Is that the personal property or is that the...
Yes, personal property. They have to take care of it. We can't afford to do that. And we don't want to do that. That's their fault. They have to pack the water. I mean, those dogs. Keep the ditch clean as well as... Also get it...
Now are they going around cleaning... Cleaning ditches? Is that one of the things that they've been doing?
They did this, so now they get the motors in. They're gonna work on this. It's gonna take time. I may bother if we're...
Yeah.
Well, you know, we don't know if this ditch is...
Is Carl gonna be late or not?
Yeah, he didn't say. It's gonna be late. I don't know. He was going to call and see if he's gonna be here or... I mean, it's a work day, which is pretty...
Right, we can go without him. I mean, then it's a big deal. And I don't know what anybody wants to talk about. Well, it looks like Kevin's talking then, so... And this ordinance here, we are talking about it. It's just a...
Oh, yeah.
That you added the...
It'd be worth it.
Right. The ordinance had to be reworked, okay?
Yes, in order... I see that with your water customer, we'll receive a copy of the customer's company history, which I appreciate. I guess that...
Yeah.
Because I think that's what's gonna happen. But I do have a question, you know, because I wanted to have a water meter tested on my rental property when my renter's person... Because we're having atrocious water bills. My first experience with water bills. And Mr. Bay told me it was $350 to have it tested. And of course, that... Were good to me getting that test and we said, "Deal with it." So I just wanted to do it. How many of these do we really do? That we would have to really raise that much for these people? I mean, these tests of... How many meters have you tested in the last year or two?
Do they charge it? They charge it for $100.
Yes, that's what they charge us.
We make no profit.
No, nothing. We make no...
I mean, I don't know what cost them. I bet that's what they charge us. We don't have the equipment to do it.
Okay.
And it'd be very expensive to get that equipment. I don't know.
Uh-huh, okay. The testing stuff. Okay, I recall it being brought last week, or last month, I'm sorry, but they were charging $75.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it was.
Yeah. Yeah.
Everything?
That was why we want... That's why we need to raise it. It's not coming out of the city. Right, right. Because how much was it before? It was only fifty.
It was fifty, and it didn't specify what size meters, which we have two size meters.
Right.
So now it's 75 for the...
How it worked.
Pretty cool, right. And the commercial...
And that's a near amount of current market rates.
Because with the commercial meters, they can't set a price and change them.
Okay, okay.
We'll just charge whatever.
They charge.
Right. And that's it. They were not charged for the time to go up there and... We don't charge that.
You're just charging this...
Just for the...
Whatever they charge is what the city charges the...
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, not anything extra. That's invincible. That's invincible.
Shh, cool, yeah. Mr. West. Uh, let's see, I can't mark it here. There were a couple of checks made, you know, just from the... Why the city or, you know, what it's for. For Countrymark, there was a check in April for 67.50.
That's, uh, Countrymark, that's the leash for our water system.
That's the water.
The leash.
Oh, the leash for water system.
Right.
Okay, that's why I'm not working. Okay. So we're not using... How... We're using our household leash to run our...
Yeah.
Our system? Yep.
That's... It's difficult, really.
And it's cheap.
A lot of cheese. That's, uh, that's all for sure. We didn't... We didn't... We all over this. This is... This is... Big boy, yeah.
And the, um, Remax best choice.
That was for a water meter deposit return.
It's not Remax. It doesn't give a realtor something.
Well, the realtor, I guess, was handling the property or they had to deposit down on the water meter. So then they paid the bill, you know, which is probably a big thing. I wish they'd go back or something.
That's... That's how it goes now.
Oh, yeah.
And the women, uh, that's the payments that we need for people to help us, like...
Correct.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask a dumb question. What if this family support payment's there?
Oh, that's, uh, one of the city workers has, um, such odd support. Maybe to take out.
Correct. Never mind. I shouldn't have yet. I'll get it when I leave.
Well, I have to send a question first to my...
I was curious. I'm gonna ask you a question. Have you got any extra gravel sitting around here? You left five days behind it.
No.
No?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I've got many tools that you have to do it from.
Yeah, I do.
I've got it as well.
I'm gonna buy some for myself.
Oh, I do do this thing for myself. And finally, I'm gonna grab it and the board sits down off of that ditch.
Yeah, it seems like soon you give up.
The highway department told me I couldn't get that gravel out of that ditch. I said, "Just put your leave and I'll get it."
Oh, my highway, it told you?
Yeah, you know how the board sits down off of my ditch. Or the winghead in Harlem. Oh, my gravel's down there.
Go back to the...
Yeah. So I really actually got my paper when I took it down. Yeah.
Because I would clean it out and make the water flow.
We have to buy gravel every... I won't try and compensate as much as I can. Plus it all works down off that.
Uh, Mr. West, is it kind of a timed issue here that we have, um... We have the missed court information here and yet we don't... I don't... I mean, right here, it says, "No court fines, no court CDC on the report." This report, there's nothing on here. Is it a time lapse thing that this was the court?
Yeah, maybe. We have court every other month. And she may not have gotten the check unless she put her information in for the register.
Okay, that's... I'm not revenue. I was gonna say, okay, so the revenue, the reason that the revenue here, that... I don't... Is this revenue that we would be getting on court fines or that this is taking in?
If you see the checks at the bottom, most of those get mailed out, um, to like the domestic violence, you know, the particular domestic violence, um, the state is the, um... And then the ones where it says "City receipts," that's the ones that they've sent to the city.
Okay. And what does CDC mean?
Um...
Someone?
I have to look at the... I just did... They really got to say CDC.
Okay, I have to.
I think it's like statements.
Because isn't that like domestic violence?
Well, yeah, there's a domestic violence one, but then I think CDC's along with similar lines. It's a fun to have, you know.
Because there's a statement over here too, saying it's a certain... It looks like the same one.
Oh, yeah, those are mandated. They set the rates for those.
In the city, yeah. Would, uh, but do you have any objections, just, you know, something of... Are you doing a court review, do you have a home budget? Since we are, uh, four months into the new budget? Maybe not this month, but, um, next month?
I'm actually preparing... Actually, I just got it done for the paper, but I gotta do the detailed reports for it in here. The semi-financial or semi-annual financial report, which has like how many, you know, basically it's all the income and all the expense for each of the major, all of our accounts, and then general stuff straight split out of it, so... I'll have that done probably, well, I actually have to have it done by the end of the month because there's this state statute. I can't write a check if I don't, so, uh, yeah, I'll be done.
Because I was looking at the financial budget report for the end of February. And we're... And the budget is going from... It's going from January, but it goes from October of the previous year. October...
October 1st.
Fifty-seven percent of the budget. And as I'm saying, it looks like it's something, I mean, four months into it and 57% of the budget is used?
Five months.
Pardon?
Five months.
Five months, right. But more than half, maybe five years since it's gone out, but I'm not gonna be...
There's some of them, yeah.
And totally in general, it's 51% of our total, 51% general fund. Four months, five months into it. But this is at nine... This might be five months, but this is February, it's in four months, isn't it?
This is through... Maybe February. So, you know, March 31st is April, but that's where I got my, you know, semi-annuals. So then in February would be five months.
And if, you know, it's a board meeting, communicate with one another about making sure that everything is going smoothly so that we can stay above water?
And on this monthly budget report on the cemetery account? Look at the used percent and tell me what that means.
Um, cemetery, um, is like... Anytime they move the cemetery, they... We have how many hours they listen, so that stuff will come out.
But how can it be 2,572% used?
Yeah, I'd cost all that too, but what's the, you know, that's the one thing.
I'm pretty sure it's a typo, but...
I think it might be two.
That's a money market account. What does that mean?
It's just a...
It's not actually where you're expensing, it's not actually money marketing. That's not the expense right here, take out, yes.
Well, I mean, it is a... It is an account of money going in or out. It's not a CD where you penalize people taking money out.
Because it looks like it's, from what I remember, I was about counting it, $543, what is in the parentheses? That's, um, the loss, it's an expense. I mean, it's in the debt and that, correct?
Well, yeah, when the original budget was set up, it looked like then the budget was $22 for the entire year for the cemetery fund, so... That's probably why we got this.
Well, that whole thing can't even be right. Because that cemetery fund's got to be more than that than the $22 down here.
Yeah, you count that on top, it's worth $400,000 in the general fund.
Right, but, and see, I don't know, I didn't do last year's budget, but, you know, it looks like this $22 was allocated to the cemetery.
Looks like our street fund is getting healthy.
Huh? It looks like... I know, I can't... That can't even rise. That there was only $22.
Is it possible that you could check with the treasurer and find out, you know, what that new cemetery reward, you know, in like $270,000?
Yeah, because that means that...
So we can understand why that market...
That can't be right. Why would there only be $22 to start with? Because of here. Well, here, original budget is $4,000, so how can this be four and this only be... See what I'm saying? That can't be right.
Well, if you... If you... $1,000, $143,000, only seven...
Right. So how can this money market account be?
And what does it mean when you have the NA? Is that not available or not applicable? I mean, I've seen that a lot on many people's...
It's not applicable, um... And I'll have the semi-financials, and I actually have all the CDs. How much they started out on October 1st and how much interest they decoys gained and then what the current totals are. I feel like everybody got those printouts from the papers. I have that in there.
But I think that's kind of important, we need to know our speed mark.
Um, MRB doesn't send out statements. So every quarter I go, they get, you know, have them print out how much interest each one of them gained for that quarter. And then I put that, um, you know, in the computers, like show the interest for each one of them. And yeah, that's gonna be part of the semi-annual financial. And then CDs, of course, they... I got that, so...
And we... First, we can't allow it to change.
What do you think? Is that true?
Is that true? Is that true? Is that true? Is that just not available at this point?
Well... Yeah, I'll use that MRB. Is this what I've done? Right, but I, um, and I will have this also because we got four reserve accounts. Two for sewer, two for water, and within each one, one's for debt. You know, reserve and another one is for like short-term asset reserve. It grows every month. It goes to A makes us, so case you're good at it, you gotta honey that paper, or you'll be going back to first, that's another one.
A lot of people have that as...
Oh, yeah, well, it's a good thing to have.
Something that I'd like to tell the defense panel, and this is probably a difficult time to do since my agenda item. But, um, talking to Mr. West and the fact that he has a difficult to read these reports because, um, you know, the time frame. When we have our meeting and the state is not in the plane. I'm thinking, could we maybe discuss changing the day, or not the day, not necessarily, but the week? Maybe putting it, bumping it down to the third Thursday of the month. Maybe he'll have more time and he'll have like, sometimes he can't get the treasure reports. I mean, it wasn't his idea, it was mine, but I talked to him about it and he's telling me that, you know, that I've been trying to get these things to the treasurer in time, but now he's not, you know, he's not balancing things or anything. When it's all done there, then it'll be easier because then we could have everything up to today except for seventy a month behind. Do you think that's something that...
But isn't it always gonna be a month behind, no matter if we do it a week later? I mean, will you be able to have it for that month?
Well, and once again, I don't wanna answer for somebody else because I'm waiting for...
Right.
Then the... And the only report that is a month behind is the treasurer's report. Everything else I print myself. I print about any time of the morning. Um, but yeah, I have to wait for the next revenue report because I gotta have the revenue manager so everything, you know, I can do it work. Um, I also have to bring in the bank reconciliation or the bank statements and he won't even let me open those. I have to take them up there to him and then he does all the bank reconciliations. We have like 13 accounts that he has to do bank reconciliations on, and then he's gotta do these reports, which are not easy. And, um, so, yeah, that's why, you know, because sometimes I don't get the bank statements till 10 days after the month is started.
But if we move the meetings back a week, is that gonna make a difference? I mean, would you...
I can't make that guarantee because I can't, you know...
He still may. You have to take that much time to get it. You never know. You got to ask him.
The...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of God, why not, right?
I can answer for, you know, our treasurer.
So maybe, is that something that you could discuss with him or is it something that the mayor should discuss with him or the old man? To see whether he thinks that that would help us be able to keep right up to date with this?
I mean, I can ask him what, you know, would be, you know, reasonable to where he could say, "Well, I have a brochure on, you know, by this time of the month."
And I realize that sometimes it's like this one's... Sometimes it's even the second Thursday is earlier in the month and... It's like someone got this in...
In... This where you can run a tree.
Was that the...
Or banana, or...
Yeah, I just came... I just asked him through. I didn't...
That's what it is. It's a bright cover. I got about six of them, one like that. All started. Do you have time to do any questions? Do you have time? Anything else you wanna discuss if you like that?
We can argue the work station, I think, so we have...
I guess.
We don't have a loss without...
I'm watching you very well. I think I have an excellent way of busy discussion.
Come on, deal, not broken.
Mr. West, Alderman, five, costume.
Here.
Alderman, President Franklin.
Here.
Alderman, where are they?
Here.
Alderman, nine, seven.
Here.
What's the agenda?
Mr. West, Mr. Reddick.
I second it.
Move the main bed on there.
Aye.
Both? Move... Somebody request something else for me? Presentant's agenda.
Mr. West, Mr. Reddick, seven, ten.
Move the main bed on there.
Aye.
Both? Board is now four. You got everybody ready for category?
First.
Since you added to it, I think you ought to do a first, and second, just a final week.
Second, Mr. Reddick, first, first three of our...
I second it.
Lady, baby on there.
Aye.
The both?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 832 and ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the operation of the water supply system owned by the city of Missouri, Missouri known as the...
Move the board to a reading?
And they can watch the both second rating of bill number 904.
Second, second. Lady, second on there.
Aye.
Both?
An ordinance amending board is number 832 and ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the operation of the water supply system owned by the city of Missouri, Missouri known as the...
Motion to a...
Discussion, please.
Yeah?
Discussion, please. Just a discussion.
We should respect the hometown, if you want.
All right, I'm just clarifying.
Please, good start.
Okay, I just wanna clarify for those who may be coming along later, that the $75 is what we are charged as a city to test these meters. So that is the charge that they will be paying. And that, um, the water meter will receive, the water customer will receive a copy of the test results from the company that did the testing. So I just wanted to make sure that the people understand and clarify that.
Well, yeah. That's what the owner says.
But they don't get the opportunity to see.
Well, yeah, they get opportunity to be in town. They want to. They could be here. And they also get a opportunity. Move... Move it to a...
I'm making a motion to adopt the...
I second it.
Will go.
Move all those, um, Alderman, Megan.
Aye. Aye.
Alderman, Cassu.
Aye.
Alderman, Sid.
Aye.
Alderman, Franklin.
Aye.
I do. I gotta catch up more on these things. And I, I gotta kind of... Okay, proclamation. I'm ready for that, yeah.
I have a proclamation. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States are designated May fifteenth as peace officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. Whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of St. Mary play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of St. Mary. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the law enforcement agency, and that members of the law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the city of St. Mary unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now that night, the honorable mayor of St. Mary called upon all citizens of the city of St. Mary and by all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the MECO, May eleventh through seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, as police week, through the appropriate ceremonies and observations in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and moral devotion to their responsibilities and rendered a dedicated service to their community and in doing so, have established for themselves an admirable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further upon call all citizens of the city of St. Mary to observe Thursday, May fifteenth, as peace officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have been disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen peoples. In witness thereof, I here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the city of St. Mary to be lifted.
Do our general reports. Uh, fire, uh, fire chief, do you have your department?
We're just getting ready to schedule barbecue and, um, we're getting ready to put that, that pump and put through that little brand of what on that truck and the end of the summer, it's probably...
So, you got it? You got anything?
No, I know the bank department.
Sweet, but...
Wish Department had a new report.
Forty? Garden's in there?
Uh, I don't have anything to report on the park. I know that the guys are gonna go down there and do some mowings and clean it. But I went up to the cemetery and there's a lot of limbs there left there. Um, I would like to try to get some people together sometime, maybe before the guys go out there and start mowing and try to get a bunch of those limbs and stuff picked up because some of them were pretty bad. So if I can get anybody to volunteer to help me on Saturday, go up there and help clean it up, I would appreciate it.
I don't think I would volunteer, that would be a no.
He has, he's gonna volunteer, I know.
Oh, that's one fine. Oh, he's not over.
No, he moved.
He's hiding.
I'm here, I'm here. Before Dr. makes sure.
Well, I'll just spring it on you that morning.
Oh, you're right, you're here now.
You got any more to say on the park?
I don't know if they're gonna mow or not.
Not other than we're gonna have barbecue on the twelfth seventh, and then wait five calls, just like...
Michael?
Yes.
Out of town?
Uh, no, in town, EMS.
You can tell if I got more to add, or...
I don't know.
Sweet boy.
We'll have a little, little, pretty good, uh, we're making, working on the road. We've got a lot of actions we're told we do, we should do really, really good. I want to go to the ground.
Well, we have to, we talked about it in the, in the work session, but what is the next step for Mr. Sherr's, Mr. Sherr's issue, I know you've talked about him, but is there anything that we need to let her know? What's being done because she's been...
I'm working on it. I was up there during the rain. Now, I'm getting stories from her, the different ditch and everything. She called me in, the water going through the garage and everything, and I thought I'd check it out. Well, Monday, the day we got all the rain, whatever day we got all the rain, no water going, no water here, I think. It was, now, I'm not saying she knew that water, I don't know, but it was cutting across the trailer behind her and right through the jar, through the jar, down to the, in the mud.
There is no trace.
And there is, there's a solution to what was going on there, but there is no water or was no water that day and it was bad rain. It went through twice. Took flood up there that day, the next day wasn't. And we think we've got solutions figured out for what I'm doing. Now, I don't know what happened when she said water went through her, but it don't show, but...
It does show, I've seen, I've seen the water come to her back door, not the water, but the tracks and what made it...
That's on the ditch she talking to me about. In my day, I ain't got my ditch in front of her house.
No, we're talking about...
Or it not coming to her.
Well, I think we, you know, and she has requested this, we've had, she's had several of us.
We're working on it, it's gonna be done. I can only say now that Clyde's gonna take care of it. I'm too. I showed him what I found, I observed when the water was coming. We had a pretty good rain that day. Now, there is this thing of rain that I don't care what you do, it's gonna get in garages, it's gonna get in basements, it's gonna get everywhere. You can't stop that. You can't build a ditch, you can't do nothing. It just can't happen. I'm, I'm talking to you and you're talking to me, but I'm just putting out a cloud of sand right now. And I, I'm still married, it's in my hands. Now, after I, after I handed that to her, it'd be a question, but right now it's in my hands. And I, man Clyde has come to a solution, and if he wants to get with, what's her name, uh...
I'm not gonna...
You don't have to.
I told you what I was gonna do. We'll see how that works.
What can you do, let her know, because she knows something, and then the rocks and the, and the ditch in front of her house.
The evidence will be there in a few days. The evidence of what's gonna happen will be there in a few days. Yes, she'll see.
It is our responsibility to represent our...
None of that's...
Represent? I've got the responsibility, I'll take care of my own, so I will tell that lady, you understand?
Yes.
That's her time to go. And then I just, with you, my three.
It's just water, I'm sure. No, it's, it's only the water, he's over three hundred, one minute here, one more, one more that over. It, the problem that I'm in, it is not her fault, and I showed it to you. You see where the mud went across the road? It was thirty yards from her house. Now, I can't think that there was a rain one day that didn't get there. Look, I get water in my garage a lot. Then if the ditch didn't get those, and I'm sure it's the still, if we get the right amount of rain, it'll get it again. We took care of it a lot, and we'll try to take care of her a lot. But I, I was out in the rain twice that day, once on my tractor. And I sat there and watched, and I know what I think, now you say, you see it, maybe you got out in the rain and looked at it like that. I walked around in the rain, staring everywhere. But I turned the door upside.
She, I told her today, she was over the middle. I did, I told, I said, okay, I'll do it, that will work better.
There you go, sweet boy. One and two.
Another report.
Animal control.
Officer Beckett, Germany, ordinance violations.
None that I can recall.
Thank you.
Move the main.
Um, I went to a care meeting, which is emergency planners, they're working on a new communication system between ambulance systems, firehouses, and things. They're also working on getting equipment to do the IP badges, which is barcodes, the new ones are called QRs, um, getting everybody, you know, what their credentials are on that. Um, they had a fire chiefs meeting the day before, American Red Cross was there, I got the contact information. I guess Bloomdale Fire Department had an incident where nine families were displaced. They called the Red Cross, they got, did not get a response very quickly, so the Bloomdale Fire Department had to pay microtill to house them. Um, Red Cross showed up and gave us their twenty prior emergency contact information, and I got that covered as well. And, um, that's, that's it.
Uh, Mr. Woods, I had, um, Mr. Floyd Adams was requesting a sea of bags. Uh, we're not there yet because, but if the water gets as bad as it's going to be, because last year he did not think he needed them in water, but in his basement, he would like to have that, so if you're emergency management, how about you handle that?
We've got, that, we'll see if that's extended for us there.
I've had times of sandbags, where they lacked you.
Well, I know, and he said last year he didn't think he'd need them, but then he found water in his basement, so he's...
I'm not going to cut the water out of bait because it's kind of, we're working on sandbags, but, and our water getting in the bait and underground people, the water is not... But we have, and that, that, that's my job right now, because that emergency management, I'm part of it. And we have had sandbags, but we didn't have any sand. There's actual, so we know when we get sand, I mean, a minute ago. Okay. Citizen participation. Because this will be the end of my meeting, and I'm going to go to the whole meeting. None? Okay. Okay, now it's my time to say farewell. I got a few things to say to the elected officers, and the one then, the one staying in, the one going out, and one re-while. The, this, people think this election is a joke sometimes, and being mayor is a thankless job. But it's so easy to condemn what we do here and not know what's going on, and you listen to half-lives and half-truths. And it's so easy to vote no for everything, I think one guy, two elections, to vote no on everything. And not explain why, but all you gotta say is that I didn't vote for it. But there's some things that systems don't like, but have to be passed. And it's your job as elected, all the ordinance and the mayor, to make decisions that has to be made for the good and welfare of the city, even though it's very unpopular. We have to vote for water rates the time of time. It's easy to vote no, and say, I didn't do it. But the law says we have to, so we got to be able to vote no because it has a sound to it. If you ain't got the nerve to do what's gotta be done, you're gonna be a bitch being an ordinance, I don't care who you are. Sometimes you gotta make decisions that most of the people ain't gonna like, but due to the laws and the economics and things, that it has to be done. And it's not happening on this board and all figures. If they know, then don't say why, or if you find one little bitty thing wrong out of twelve things and don't say a word and vote no, you, it's taking it easy about, I didn't do it, I don't have to answer for it. If it's good, no, I said it, and if it's bad, I didn't vote for it. That's the sorry thing I would say now to anybody. If you don't want to be an ordinance, you shouldn't be one. If you want to be one, you should do the job to the full, our mayor, to the fullest extent of your ability. And you're gonna make things a mess. But I, this board needs to get together, work together, and we just had to vote no on this considered agenda. I've been putting up with that for two years, four years, no excuse, everyone's, well, there's a little bitty mistake there when they make it. So I had to get with David beforehand and correct it, and it be took care of, if it was a mistake. We don't know if it was a mistake. You tell us a little bitty mistake, that's your opinion, who are the... That don't mean it was, but David did a chance to correct it out. We got the recording there. So, hit this the car way up. But you have to have the nerve to do what's right if you're gonna serve your city. And I think, I, I don't care, I call names, Frank voted no on everything he does, you're following right the same suit with it. You got a chance to go different, because if one more election coming up, then there ain't gonna be no difference the way things are going. You gotta represent these people for what's good for them. With that said, I got nothing more to say on, I just hope it all works together, you take your office, and do your job the best you can to represent the city, not your friends or your neighbor, or especially yourself. If you do something to represent yourself, the law will take care of that, that'd be illegal. Well, if you take care of your friends and things, you can work that through the law. It should be good for the city, that don't mean you don't breathe it. But it should weigh out all the things, and not ram it down somebody's throat, and not there, can't talk about it. That's all I gotta say. Now, I can see here we got a presentation, award of the ward.
Senator St. Mary. I'd like to present the Honorable Carlton Key Wyatt, um, for his dedication and support of seventeen years of outstanding public service.
Seventeen years. I've been doing two-year lives, he's saying ninety.
Oh, I guess.
It feels like forty. I, I, I am, I will say, I will, but, but I do like to want to thank my wife who has put up with the several things. You don't realize how many times we've had to change our vacation trip, how many times we've had to come back early, and the things we've had to do to do the job that I took on to do, and just all going through the same thing. Your best, because you'll have meetings and things that's gonna be put on her work, but work, the work is a mess. That's what I've been there. But my wife has put up with a lot of phone calls, and I don't get too many phone calls. I've been there, canceled a lot of things we wanted to do and put in because, but I've enjoyed it. I can't say the last two years have been the greatest I've had, but I enjoyed them too. The things are starting to look better. I thank the people in this town, trusting the wake up and seeing what's going on, and I think they're gonna be putting good people in and showing this town, and I think they'll do it more if you guys operate good. Thank you.
The Chamber of Commerce, representing this plaque to call by the mayor. We got a whole new hero, this accomplishment he has done. He's told us farming, if there's any way we can have a new farmhouse, and we got it, and it's paid for. That is accomplishment by itself. And secure the water system and stuff, you've only worked with the Chamber, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, it's a good... Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't say one more thing, and I would like to get a picture with it. If it wasn't for Joanne, these things here wouldn't have been happening. I mean, she was a... I mean, she was a jewelry work with it, but that, I got a lot being accomplished, I got credit for it. The boat ramp and things like that, I, I just talked to her about, she taped it, and I was like, I would like to get a picture with you, with you, with you two boys. Yes, come on.
Yeah, you're right now.
It's very funny, you're a little brave, so like... All right, there we go, all right, yeah. Chill, that's putting it in, I don't have the layer, yeah, a little bit more.
You wanna turn this up down?
I was gonna say, when I'm just pointing around.
I was gonna say, either that or move the camera a little bit different, someone's gonna...
God?
It's got the perfect...
And, White, I feel good with the replacement we got for you. He, he gonna do one, he gonna go down. It makes it a lot easier leaving knowing that they got good gardens there. Okay, you got a panel of the election? Yeah.
Yeah, confirm the results of the election. Brendan Franklin, um, wound up with eighty votes in the mayoral race, uh, Frank Gerardo wound up with fifty-four votes. So, um, you are the clear winner of that. Um, in war of one, um, Alderman Clyde Costu defeated Roger Odom by a vote of thirty-one to twenty-one. Congratulations, you won that election. In war two, Dennis Bode defeated Danny Boyett by a vote of fifty-two to twenty-eight. So, congratulations, you are representative of war two, and Gloria Vader won war one, war one.
I got the many votes of somebody else, I didn't have that right.
You won by the biggest majority.
All right, I think the board had to make one to approve.
Oh.
And I'm like, do you want? We'd have to make one to approve the, uh, county clerk.
I like the one you do.
Do it, do it.
What he said.
Make, uh, they test the, uh, county on the, uh, election.
A second.
One make big, um, there.
Aye.
Of course. Okay, swear now to the new election.
All right.
Yep, you asked me to one. Yeah, I'm sure. Give the, I'm gonna be turning for the, the new favor, can you? Can you, don't, don't worry about me, turn you back to me.
Oh.
All right, I'm getting that clear. We can do that.
You guys can stand in front, me and Brendan, if I, the women in front.
Women in front, come on, switch on it.
I think...
I was gonna say, this year, all along.
All right, everybody raise your right hand, and repeat after me, I, state your name.
I, Brendan, I, one for your favor.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Missouri. Do solemnly support the...
Swear I will support the...
The provision of all laws of this state.
The provision of all laws of this state.
Affecting cities of this class, affecting cities of this class, and the ordinances of the city.
And the ordinance of the city.
That I possess the qualifications required for such office.
That I possess the qualifications for such a office.
As specified in the laws of the State of Missouri.
As specified in the laws of the State of Missouri.
And that I will do me myself faithfully in said office.
And I will do me myself faithfully in said office.
Yeah.
You guys are...
No, I didn't. Try locking the doors down the doors, and start frankling, and make, make you start talking.
Okay, new mayor address board and alderman. First thing I wanna do is thank everybody who voted for me for the confidence. Um, I want everybody to know that I'm willing to work with you. I, I have a few changes I wanna make, but, um, you know, we'll work on that. Um, I just hope we can all get along and do what we need to do for what's best for the city of St. Mary's. And that's all I got. Thanks, Paul.
No problem.
Okay. Um, do any of you guys wanna address, have anything to say?
Well, I have a, a week, a lot, and you can probably give thanks on the rest of it.
Dennis?
Uh, I'd like to thank the citizens of St. Mary's for their vote confidence in me to do the job or do what we need to do, and I would love that one.
Gloria, you have anything else?
I'll work as hard as I can to, 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 to my home, have been for a long time, and I'll do my best part.
Okay, I am, um, we're gonna do some appoint, uh, the appointments. Um, Clyde's gonna leave you on screens since you, that's what you've been doing. Um, Dennis, do you know you're gonna be doing the water and sewer? Uh, Gloria, how about the fire and police? And Diana, we're gonna put you over the park and the cemetery.
I decline. As I can before.
That's your right. So if you wanna decline, I guess, uh, we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do about the park and cemetery.
I'm here every day, day in, day out, I'm taking over the park and cemetery. Well, who I am. I volunteer for it.
Okay, so Diane, I guess I'll put you over animal control. So basically, you don't wanna do anything.
I, it's not that I don't, I will do things. There is things that I would be very glad to do, and I said that before, and we can discuss that if you would like. Animal control is a law enforcement issue, not something an alderman, and none of these aldermen have to take these jobs. If you had done your research, would, would, would believe, they have told it. That's why I've been confident that I can decline it, because the municipal league said it's not something that they have, that we, as aldermen have to do. We choose to do it, I know we don't have to.
They had dog control, they all come to my place anyway, but I do a lot from the old mark. Every day I look out, there's one, I'm like, yeah, anymore, we get up, go to the county, definitely.
Okay, we need to move on, um, the election of the board president. Do, does somebody wanna make a motion, um, who?
I made a motion, it's Clyde, but it looks like he's been here long, it's good.
Somebody here made a nomination, that's all.
I didn't, Clyde.
It's all right.
We got, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, now we need to reaffirm David as city clerk. So I need to make, well, I need somebody to make a motion.
Make a motion to affirm, uh, David Lewis to be city clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, resolution for banking signature card. We need somebody that can sign the checks, it's here during the day. So, I need a motion for, who I need to do that?
This, um, this is a motion.
I'm making one for them, we did it all done.
Okay, second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And if there's nothing else, I need a motion.
For yours.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
You got a vote?
Oh.
Well, she's in a hurry, ain't she?
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, no.
Get down there.